We have a quorum. The mayor is out of town tonight. He's had a death in the family and he cannot be here.
It's getting worse.
First item is invocation to be given by Councilman Gilmore and pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Guarina. Councilman Gilmore?
Y'all would please join me in a moment of silence. Especially have our thoughts go out to those folks in Boston.
Join me in the pledge of the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Maybe a seat. Just reading commas or commas ago. Time. Just phrase that way. Get an air first place. We don't.
Have a vote on the red hats or something? Wherever y'all are.
They're hiding from ya.
Where are they?
Whereas laughter is a staple of life, providing comic relief from the day-to-day routine, and red hat women desire fun and friendship and refuse to conform to an old-fashioned image of women over 50. And whereas the Red Hat Society was started in April of 1998 and now has over 70,000 chapters in more than 30 countries to create fun after 50, and red hat ladies of all walks of life can be easily spotted in full regalia. Consisting of purple outfit with a red hat if the lady is over 50 years of age or older and lavender outfits with pink hats for ladies under 50. And whereas physicians are actually encouraging women in middle age to become red hat ladies as the benefits of social interaction, companionship, and engaging life with fun and vigor contribute to quality of life, providing that laughter has always been the best medicine. And whereas, women over the age of 50 are the largest segment of the population at this time and are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas, this is the 15th anniversary of the Red Hat Society. Now for there, I Rudy Durham, deputy mayor, excuse me, mayor pro tem of the city of Lewisville, Texas, to honor the decree of Susan Sue Ellen Cooper, the exalted queen mother and founder of the society, to hereby proclaim April 15, 2013, as Red Hat Society Day in Lewisville, Texas, and may all the ladies in this local chapter have a blessed, delightful, and fun day. Proclaim this 15th day of April 2013.
Come on, Wiz. We got a picture.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody with a statement?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Rebecca Purcell. This is for the Great American Cleanup.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas Keep America Beautiful Inc. is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping individuals improve their community and environment, and has established the Great American Cleanup as its signature national effort for involving American citizens, environment, and environmental stewardship by celebrating its 29th anniversary in 2013, featuring over 3.8 million volunteers, participating in over 30,000 events in over 16,000 communities in all 50 states. And whereas Keep Lewisville Beautiful is an award-winning affiliate of the Keep America Beautiful, Keep Texas Beautiful, that will host and promote litter abatement, recycling, and beautification activities at its 27th annual citywide spring cleanup project, taking on Saturday, April 20, 2013. And whereas the community of Lewisville is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community through the actions of citizens, schools, government, business, and businesses working together. Whereas the city of Lewisville recognizes the important commitment to improve American communities through litter prevention, beautification, and solid waste management initiatives, and committed to help spread the word about the importance of volunteerism and motivate everyone in our communities to become stewards of the environment. And now, therefore, I Rudy Durham, mayor pro tem of the city of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Great American Cleanup in the city of Lewisville, and call upon our citizens to join in activities that promote reasonable environmental stewardship and help us renew our commitment to building a better world today and for the future generations. Proclaim this 15th day of April 2013.
Cleanup.
Thank you. Next item is the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week was originally introduced in Congress in 1991 to honor emergency telecommunications and to recognize the crucial role they play in our communities. Whereas thousands of dedicated public safety telecommunications personnel serve citizens every day by answering telephone calls from police, fire, and emergency medical services, and by dispatching assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas public safety telecommunications personnel are the vital link between people calling for help and the agencies which assist them. And whereas public safety telecommunications are professionals who behind needs and often unrecognized actions are responsible for helping to protect people and property. Now, therefore, I Rudy Durham, mayor pro tem of the city of Lewisville, Texas, to hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through April 20, 2013, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In the city of Lewisville, and urge all citizens to honor telecommunications and to recognize the crucial role they play in our cities, proclaim this 15th day of April 2013.
The next group is the National Library Week Proclamation.
Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities, campuses, and schools, whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls. Whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community. Whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebooks. Whereas libraries offer classes to meet community needs, including preparing young children for learning to read, homework held to students of all ages, providing residents with job search and resume writing instruction, and financial planning services to older adults planning their retirement. Whereas libraries can continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every community and for every member of their community. Whereas librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Rudy Durham, mayor pro tem of the city of Lewisville, proclaim the week of April 14 through April 20, 2013, as National Library Week, and I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. Communities matter at your library.
It's your support that allows the library to be a vibrant educational and cultural center for our community. With your support, librarians proctored over 300 exams last year. Online research tools were accessed 2,300 times per month, 28,000 times last year. Students used library resources to study for standardized tests, school assignments, driver's ed tests, college entrance exams, armed forces exams, federal employment exams, and more. Research was conducted for science fair projects, term papers, college entrance exams, undergraduate and graduate assignments, and more. Study space was available for five future nurse practitioners, six future chiropractors, one medical doctor studying for a state medical board exam, high school debate teams, math and chemistry study groups, and more. Homeschool families use library resources and study space. Staff borrowed 1,300 interlibrary loan books; over 60% of those were technical and scholarly titles. In celebration of National Library Week and through August 31st, we're inviting everyone to tell us, where does your library card take you? And send us pictures of how you used your library card. If you used our travel center to plan a family vacation, take a photo of you and your library card on your trip. If you use Consumer Reports to buy a new car, a new camera, or a new computer, snap a picture of your new purchase and your library card. If our computers helped you get a new job, send a photo of yourself and your library card in your new workplace. You get the picture. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is for Dent County Crime Victims Rights Week. Charlene Collins?
Whereas about 50% of violent crimes are not reported, and only a fraction of victims receive the help they need. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week pays tribute to the millions of crime victims over the decades, some of the strength to rebuild their shattered lives, families, and communities, one step at a time while also honoring the victim service community whose members have walked along with those victims, responding to their courage with unwavering commitment and skillful methods. And whereas victims' rights are critical components of the promise of justice for all, the foundation for our system of justice in America. And whereas observing victims' rights and treating victims with dignity and respect serves the public interest by engaging victims in the justice system, inspiring respect for public authorities, and promoting confidence in public safety. Whereas we do better to ensure services are available for underserved segments of our population, including crime victims with disabilities, victims with mental illness, victims who are teenagers, victims who are elderly, victims in rural areas, and victims in communities of poverty. And whereas America recognizes that we have our homes, neighborhoods, and communities safer and stronger by serving victims of crime and ensuring justice for all. Now, therefore, I Rudy Durham, mayor pro tem of the city of Lewisville, Texas, to hereby proclaim the week of April 21 through April 27, 2013, as Dent County Crime Victims Rights Week. Further urge all citizens and institutions, public and private, to support the establishment, enforcement, and victims' rights and services through participating in appropriate state and local activities during the designated week with the theme of New Challenges, New Solutions, and recognize the emerging challenges we must face in the 21st century. Proclaim this 15th day of April 2013.
Consideration of An Ordnance for Zone Change Request from General Business to General Business Estate Townhome of 60.81 acres located at southwest corner of Cookie Lane and Windhaven Parkway. Further identified as Lot 1, Block A, Crossroads Center, South Edition, Phase 1, as requested by GNA Consultants on behalf of the property owner. Administrative comments. The developer is proposing to rezone approximately 53 acres to estate townhomes in order to construct 232 detached single-family residence as well as a clubhouse with pool and open area. Roughly eight acres at the southeast corner and southwest corners of the property will retain the general business designation. The plan and zoning commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of seven to zero at the March 19, 2013 meeting. Staff recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance and set forth in the caption above. Okay, we have one card tonight for Rooker Stensrud. Is that correct? And you're here just to answer any questions we might have?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion to close the public hearing in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to adopt the ordinance is written.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt.
Second.
And it's by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Guarina. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Lewisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the 60.81 acre tract of land fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from general business district zoning to general business and estate townhouse district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item is the Citizens' Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action will be taken on these items. I don't have any cards. Does anybody wish to speak that hadn't filled out a card? Okay. Next item is Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or citizen so requests. For citizens to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the secretary. The council has elected to pull number three off the agenda, off of the consent agenda. Somebody have a motion? Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we remove item three from the consent agenda.
Are you wishing to also vote to approve the other items?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number three is approval of amendment number two in the amount of $235,589 to the professional services agreement with Bridgewater and Associates, Inc., for services related to the Windhaven Parkway at the KCS Railroad Project, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Administrative comments. On May 17, 2010, the city council approved a professional services agreement with Bridgewater and Associates, Inc., for the design of Windhaven Parkway at the Kansas City Southern Railroad. And I see that that's already up on the board, so I'll suspend the rest of the reading of that. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I think this is a project that should have another look. As a matter of fact, I would go so far as to say this even is not the same project that was signed off on. And it is so different that it doubles the cost of the, it approximately doubles the cost of the consultant's fee from $460,000 to almost three-quarters of a million dollars. And additionally, it has the impact of what was estimated as a construction cost of $4.8 million going to $9 million. And as it was explained to me in the workshop, this is because, really, this is a new project. And since, if that is the case, I feel as though with these kind of monies involved, maybe there's some money to be saved in looking at other options. And for that reason, I will be voting against this.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Does anyone have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, and that was Councilman Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
And Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion?
I'm going to be voting in favor of this. Staff has a nice track record in my time here of taking things back out to bid if they think they're out of line. I'm going to trust that they've done the due diligence based on the conversation we had in the back room there during workshop, which of course is videotaped and can be seen at any time, so you're welcome to take a look and have that discussion. So from my mind, the cost of running this back through the bids is going to offset any type of savings you're going to run into. So the net-net is we're going to keep moving forward and get this project out of the ground. So I'll be voting in favor of it. That's all I have.
Any more discussion? Any motions? Already got the motion on it. We already have the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one negative vote. Regular hearing. Consideration of Reappointing Sarah McLean to Place Number Three on the Community Development Block Land Advisory Committee. In accordance with the city council's attendance policy, Sarah McLean has missed three consecutive meetings on CDVG and is automatically removed. Upon discussion with Ms. McLean, staff has determined that this was due to a serious health concern. Ms. McLean has indicated that she is now able to meet the attendance requirements and is requested she be allowed to remain on the board. Ms. McLean has had an excellent attendance record prior to her health concern. Staff recommends that Ms. McLean be appointed to the CDVG. Recommendation is that the council appoint Sarah McLean to Place Number Three on the CDVG Advisory Committee. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we...
Mayor, I make a motion that we reappoint Sarah McLean to place three on the Community Development Block Grant Committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to reappoint and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is reports. Nika? Nothing?
Sir.
Nothing?
No, sir.
Easy so far? I got to ask, Dean said I had to ask about the lake.
We're still five feet low.
Okay, okay.
Leave right.
Okay. Nothing? Eric? Councilman Garina?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilman Gilmore?
Yes, sir. Today, you may have noticed, if you haven't already, get on one of the city newsletters. There's several places to sign up on the website, but some notifications went out that we are starting our Louisville 2025 Plan. We're inviting all residents to take part in helping to develop that plan. It's basically where does Louisville want to be when it's 100? I don't know about you, but I want it to be a really exciting place like it is today. I don't want it to go downhill, so we need a good, strong vision, and we need that from all of our residents. So there's a great resource on the website, bottom left-hand corner. It says "In the Spotlight Louisville 2025." You click there, you can sign up to be notified of public meetings, as well as possibly to be involved in one of the boards and commissions. And even more importantly, we've made it super easy. You can go on there and you can actually take a survey and start putting your input in right now. So for those of you who love this town like I do, get involved. This takes very little time, and it's going to be a great, great outcome for our city in 25 years. Well, it's not even 25 years, is it? It's getting 12 and a half. I'm getting old. Thank you. That's all I got.
City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember?
Yes, sir. First of all, MCL Grand. And the first one, it's a great pleasure for me to announce, April 19 and 21, Shannon Lee, an incredibly talented violinist, very young. Trying to remember what age she is, but she always looks like a child to me. Will be playing with Louisville Lake Symphony. Friday concerts at 7:30, Sunday at 2:30 PM. Tickets are still available. Shannon has played all over the world. She's played with the Dallas Symphony several times. Incredibly talented girl. And to just make my day, people who know me very closely know that Elgar is one of my all-time favorite composers, and she'll be playing Elgar. So that makes me very happy. For those who don't have tickets to the Texas Tunes Series with Marcia Ball, it's too late. The good news is you miss the Stampede, and the bad news is you'll miss a great concert. She's been up for, what do they call them, Grammys four times. She's referred to as the queen of Texas-Louisiana border blues and boogie. And if you've got tickets, I'll see you there, and if you don't, hey, it's your loss. The Lake City's Ballet will be performing Capella. And this is a real quirky ballet, but if you've never seen it, it's very entertaining. That'll be Friday, April 26, Saturday, the 27th, and Sunday, the 28th. And for times, you can go on the website, the MCL Grand website, or the Lake City's Ballet website. And then April 27, we have in the arts exhibits Shirley Beer's Pioneer. It's a retrospective of works of late artists, and I am looking forward to getting a look at that. And then looking ahead into May, May 1 through 5, our Productions Theater Company will be doing Into the Woods. I've actually seen this performed before, but not by them, and I can tell it's a lot of fun. And that'll be Wednesday, May 1, Friday, May 3, Saturday, May 4, and Sunday, May 5. And then Texas Tunes comes back again for the final concert, I believe, of the series on May 18 with Max Stallings. And I haven't heard him before. I've heard good things about him, so check that one out. And then changing notes, it looks like I'm headed back down to Austin next week on the Camelot landfill issue. And you wouldn't think I'd be looking forward to that, but I actually am. I mean, the folks with the staff that know me know that I'm very committed to seeing this thing through. So make the trip down there. We'll meet with the Subcommittee on Environmental Regulations and hopefully get this thing brought to the floor for a vote. So wish me luck. That's it.
Okay, Councilman Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to be the first one to wish you luck, Councilman.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say that the senior center is having their 2013 Health Fair on April 26. They're going to have about 70 vendors there. They're going to do some health screening, and it's going to run from 8 o'clock until 12:30 PM. And I hope you're able to attend that. I've been out a couple of times. It's very enjoyable. And the only other thing I'd like to comment on or make an announcement about is the Louisville Senior High School. At 6:30 on the 18th, they're going to have a community meeting on legislation that is affecting the Louisville Independent School District. For grades 3 through 12 are the ones that are going to be impacted, and they're going to have a community discussion of that legislation. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor, have you then? City Secretary? Officer, thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Next item is closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Item 1, Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, and Item 2, Section 551.087, Deliberations Regarding Economic Development Negotiation. We'll adjourn into closed session. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Is there anything to come out of closed session?
Yes, I have a motion. I move to authorize the city manager or his designee to sign all documents necessary to purchase the property located at Lots 7 and 8, Block E, OT Louisville Edition in Louisville, Denton County, Texas.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Councilman Vaughn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
You got the hammer.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me.